All right, welcome everybody to the Maricopa County Planning Commission. I'm going to call this meeting to your order. We could have a roll call, please.
Chairman Slasher.
Here.
Commissioner Arnett. Commissioner Curly.
Here.
Commissioner Dan Zeison.
Here.
Commissioner Hernandez.
Here.
Commissioner Landau.
Here.
Commissioner Lawrence. Commissioner Limblum.
Here.
Commissioner Montoya.
Here.
Commissioner Swart.
Here.
Chairman, we have a quorum. Thank you.
Okay, perfect. I need to back up and welcome our newest commissioner, Commissioner Curly. And, uh, welcome on board.
Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity.
Yeah. No problem. Next item is election of officers. With that, I'd like to make a motion to nominate Commissioner Hernandez as chairman. Do I have a second?
Second.
I'll second that.
I think Commissioner Montoya has seconded. Any discussion? That's not my recollection from last year, but you voted on the first one. And then it went up or down, and then you made another nomination. No, Darren? Say that again?
It sounds like there are no other nominations.
Oh. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none. I have a motion and a second to nominate Commissioner Hernandez as chairman for 2024. Have a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Curly.
Yes.
Commissioner Dan Zeison.
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez.
Yes.
Commissioner Landau.
Yes.
Commissioner Limblum.
I did a great job, yes.
Commissioner Montoya.
Thanks for your willingness to serve, and it's a big yes.
Commissioner Swart.
Yes.
And Chairman Slasher.
Yes.
Chairman, that's a vote of eight to zero for Commissioner Hernandez to serve as chairman.
All right, congratulations. I'll do the same for Vice Chair. I would like to nominate Commissioner Limblum as Vice Chair. Have a second?
I'll second that.
Are there any further nominations? Hearing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Curly.
Yes.
Commissioner Dan Zeison.
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez.
Yes.
Commissioner Landau.
Yes.
Commissioner Limblum.
Yep.
Commissioner Montoya.
Yes.
Commissioner Swart.
Yes.
And Chairman Slasher.
Yes.
Chairman, we have a vote of eight to zero for Commissioner Limblum to serve as Vice Chair.
Okay, perfect. With that, I'm going to gladly pass the gavel for Chairman Hernandez. Congratulations.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. Looking forward to, uh, 2024. So, I guess with that, we get started.
Chairman Hernandez, can I make a comment real quick?
What's that, Jimmy?
I said, could I make a comment really quick?
Of course.
Yeah, just want to thank Chairman Slasher and actually the entire board. We work together as a group really well and, um, just a pleasure to be with each of you every other week and just thankful for each of you. We have our fun little heated debates at times on opinions of land uses, but just really consider you all good colleagues and friends and just but really thankful for those that have always been willing to step up and be here every week and staff. It's just a pleasure to serve with each of you, but especially wanted to thank Luke for him and the way he treats people and just the goodness in him. So, thank you for that time to be able to say that.
I second the sentiment.
I appreciate it. Thank you, guys.
I got some big shoes to fill after following Slasher for a year, so. Anyways, well, let's get this meeting started. This meeting has been noticed in accordance with open meeting law, ARS 38-431. Agendas are available within 24 hours of each meeting in the Maricopa County Planning and Development Office and are also available on the planning and development website one week prior to the hearing at maricopa.gov/Planning. The staff reports prepared for each agenda item shall become a part of the permanent record for each case. With respect to hearing process, cases will be considered in the order they appear on the agenda, unless otherwise agreed to by the commission. For each case, the applicant will be given a set amount of time to present. Anyone wishing to speak on a particular case shall fill out a speaker's card for in-person attendance or raise your hand within the go-to webinar. The amount of time allowed for speaking shall be at the discretion of the commission chair. Staff will provide the chairman with the names of the persons who have registered and noted desire to comment and those registered participants who have raised their hand. The chairman will call on each named participant one at a time. The chairman will conduct the hybrid in-person and virtual public hearing according to the bylaws and according to the rules established by the chairman regarding public comment. Votes will be done by roll call vote only. The chairman will verbally identify the specific members responsible for all motions and seconds. Moving on to the minutes. Minutes for the November 2nd and November 16th hearings have been sent out. Are there any comments from the commissioners? All right, hearing no comments, the minutes are approved. Moving on to consent agenda, Darren, I believe we have some changes.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Agenda Item 1, Z 2022-068, known as the Ville. There are folks here to speak to that, and so we'll pull that off consent. And I understand that Commissioner Landau is recusing herself from a vote on a consent agenda item number three, Z 2023-106, PHO Marisol.
Yes, that's correct. Thank you.
And I'll proceed into the consent agenda then. There are two items remaining. They are Z 2023-004 Rural Electric in District 2. It's a zone change to industrial 2 IUPD for two and a half acres at the northwest corner of Apache Trail and 96th Street. There's no known opposition. The recommendation in paragraph 12 is for approval, subject to conditions A through G. In Z 2023-106, PHO Marisol in District 4, it is a special use permit for wireless communication facility in the form of an 80-foot-high lattice tower designed as a windmill on a 33, part of a 33-acre parcel west of the northwest corner of Montgomery Road and 163rd Avenue. There's no known opposition. The recommendations for approval, subject to conditions A through G in paragraph 11, and that concludes our consent agenda. I'm sorry. In item two, there's a handout for condition H to be added. I apologize.
Thank you, Darren. Is there any questions of staff by the commission? Is there, is there anyone from the public interested in speaking? There are no public interest cards up here. David, is there anybody on the webinar with their hands raised?
Not aware of anyone who wishes to speak online.
Okay, thank you. So, since no one is, raise their hand or wishes to speak, we will close the public forum. Are there any questions of the commission for that you want to discuss for these two cases on consent agenda? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Ms. Chairman?
Yes, Commissioner Slasher?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented by staff, including item H.
Thank you. We have a motion by Commissioner Slasher. Do we have a second?
Second.
And we have a second by Commissioner Montoya. Rosalie, will you have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Curly.
Yes.
Commissioner Dan Zeison.
Yes.
Commissioner Landau.
Yes, as to case Z 2023-004, and I'm recusing myself from Z 2023-106. Did I do that right, Wayne?
Yes.
Great.
Vice Chair Limblum.
Yes.
Commissioner Montoya.
Yes.
Commissioner Swart.
Yes.
Commissioner Slasher.
Yes.
Chairman Hernandez.
Yes.
Chairman, that's a motion recommending approval of the consent agenda by a vote of eight to zero, and Landau is being recused on item number three.
Thank you, Rosalie. Moving on to regular agenda. I guess we have item number one, Z 2022-068, the Ville.
That is correct, Chairman Hernandez. Good morning, members of the commission. This is case number Z 2022-068, the Ville. The applicant, on behalf of the owner, is requesting to rezone a six-acre site from rural 43 to R16 RUPD for a future single-family residential subdivision. The site is located on the northeast corner of Thunderbird Road and 73rd Avenue in the Peoria area. The applicant and the property owner wish to process this zone change with overlay with the county and then process the annexation into city of Peoria, followed by subdivision planning with the city of Peoria. The conceptual plan illustrates a residential subdivision with 19 lots surrounded by open space on all sides. The future streets within this community will be private with a single gated access point along Thunderbird Road. Originally, this case was heard on September 22nd, 2022. The commission hearing heard this as a request to rezone the site to R4 RUPD for a townhome community. However, that was actually recommended, approved by the commission. However, before the board hearing, the applicant put this on, placed it on indefinite continuance and for a while waited and then resubmitted this request. And now changing this, instead of townhomes, we're going to concentrate on single-family residential traditional development on 19, conceptually 19 lots. And the change, the zoning to R16 RUPD on that. So, uh, applicant is also requesting to vary R16 development standards that are going to include increased lot coverage, decreased yard width, and will add parameters on how to measure lot width on lots that have narrow throats. In compensation for these varied standards, the applicant proposes that at least 15% of the zoning district, I mean, 15% of the site shall be set aside for common open space. Staff supports the proposed R16 RUPD zoning, which creates an opportunity for an infill development on this site. And the site is within the municipal planning area of Peoria and also has access to city services along Thunderbird Road. Therefore, staff are making a recommendation to approve this following subject to conditions A through G listed in the staff report and with an elimination of condition D that's mentioned in the recent, the first handout for this site. And the first handout for the site, condition D, was originally to restrict platting to the city of Peoria, but we've kind of felt that would be redundant on this site. And to address another handout that was presented out today for this site, we did have a last-minute request from the city of Peoria that wanted to add conditions, four conditions, onto this site. Now, by looking at those conditions, we judge that all these conditions are going to be covered on condition C that are listed in the staff report and also in condition D, number two, that's also listed in the condition site. So, staff have recommended that would be redundant and request that we keep this as subject to conditions A through G that are listed in the current site staff report with the elimination of D. And with revision, number two. Great. And that is my conversation, presentation, sorry.
Thank you, Ms. Martel. Does the commission have any questions of staff?
Ms. Chairman?
Yes.
You stay in your presentation. I remember this case. Time flies. It was September of 2022.
Correct.
And we approved it at the time for R4 RUPD.
That's correct. It was a vote of five to zero.
Yeah. And now they're back a couple of years later for R16.
R16. Reason for this change is because there was a lot of opposition that we had for that townhome development, if you can recall during that hearing. And based on a lot of the opposition that the applicant has been working with, there's been a lot of discussions that townhomes is really not what people would want for this site. They'd be, they'd feel better with a traditional, single-family residential development. Therefore, the applicant went to change this to R16 to create a traditional subdivision plat, still go within the motions to annex into Peoria, but that's pretty much the way everything changed on that.
Okay. They essentially are volunteering to downzone. Not that they ever got officially rezoned, but they're downzoning from what they originally proposed.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Commissioner Slasher. Is the applicant present and wanting to present on the case? Good morning. Thank you for coming. Please, please provide your name for the record.
Good morning. Thank you all. Hear me okay here? And congratulations, Chairman Hernandez. Appreciate a couple of minutes to talk about the Ville. I'll be very brief. Ashley Barsh with Gamage and Burnham, 40 North Central, for your records. As staff indicated, this case has been before you in September 2022. So, as a refresher for our continuing commissioners and some introduction to our new members, I'll, again, just highlight a couple really brief points about this project, if I can get the clicker moving here. Just as a refresher, this project is brought forward by Capital Allocation Partners. They are a prominent, a predominant developer in our, our community or town here. They were the primary developer when we brought this September 2022 townhome project to you. Since then, and you saw in the written materials and in Mr. Martel's presentation, this project has completely pivoted. It's a 75% reduction in density from what you approved earlier in 2022. With that came a new development partner, Sonora West Development, who does luxury builds. So, in addition to a townhome to residential lot, single-family residential project, new development partner in play too, who does more of a luxury line and product. So, just wanted to acknowledge that new partnership since this came before you in September. As a refresher to this location, it is 6.2 acres approximately in a really, really busy corridor, and that was the inspiration from the townhome project. This really is an infill opportunity when you come off the Loop 101, travel eastward on Thunderbird. You've got a plethora of different commercial, which you see outlined in the red and the green. And this site is just a stone's throw away from the 75th Avenue commercial corridor there with a Walgreens, a Walmart, a Taco Bell, a Bashes. So, when you take a holistic view at this specific location, it really is an infill opportunity. As mentioned, 6.2 acres. This is an assemblage project, so it's really broken down between six parcels. And it is a county island. It is within a very mixed-use area. You saw the commercial and then, not on this exhibit, but just to highlight for you, the uses, there is the commercial, the medical office, which is highlighted. There's a cemetery, which is actually a little bit further east. Something happened when we converted this to PDF, but it's a little bit further east and residential in the area. And with the adjacent zoning, there's actually RM1 zoning within the city of Peoria that allows for four stories and quite a bit of multifamily density. So, just to reiterate some of the history, again, for benefit of recollection of our continuing members and for our new commissioners, we did file in April 2022 for that R4 RUPD to allow that townhome community, worked through the process. This commission approved that request for R4 RUPD, those 80 units. March, we went to Board of Supervisors and at that time, continued to receive feedback from the community. They would have preferred single-family residential. We took that feedback to heart, and as you see before, you completely revamped our project, which took some time, March to now, because it is a holistic change to, you know, the, the community we're proposing today. August, we refiled, we contacted our neighbors, let them know we were refiling, kept them abreast of that process, updated website materials, offered to meet, contacted main opposition again to let them know our hearing date's coming. We're still moving forward with the 19-lot proposal, not the 80-unit townhome proposal, and are here you before, today, with that amended request for R16. So, just to really put this in perspective, again, on the 2022 plan, you see the 80-unit multifamily residential unit that was at a density of almost 13 dwelling units per acre. It was a rental opportunity. It did not have a gate. Again, that R4 RUPD request. And then you see our revised plan, which is 19 single-family residential luxury lots, gated, a density of just over three dwelling units per acre, an ownership opportunity with lotting. And just to highlight, again, this is a 75% reduction in density from what you approved in September 2022. I won't belabor this. This is the lotting plan one more time. And just to kind of bring it full circle, we do view this as an infill opportunity with the surrounding uses, fully built out, a lot of commercial in the area. Very thoughtful design. I can't applaud Sonora and West and Capital Allocation Partners enough for really scrapping their whole initial project and coming before you with significant revisions responsive to what the community told us they wanted, including some of the access we worked out. I've been doing this a long time. I can't identify a different case where a developer has done such a drastic change and pivoted and wanted to bring it before the planning commission so that you would have an opportunity to see those revisions again. We do have staff recommendation of approval yet again on this proposal. We agree with all the staff stipulations and would respectfully request a recommendation for approval from this body. Once again, revised development plan, that's 75% less than what you approved in September 2022. But I'd happily answer any questions.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Marsh. Does the commission have any questions of the applicant? All right, I don't hear any right now. We'll proceed with in-person speakers, then allow those registered online to speak. After public comment, we will allow time for rebuttal by the applicant. Looks like we have one here in person, John Johnson. Thank you for coming down, Mr. Johnson. If you would please state your name for the record.
Hi, my name's John Johnson. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm a longtime resident of the community that this project's in, Weedville. The Weed family founded it in the early 1900s. So, there seems to be some confusion. The information I have shows an access off of 73rd Avenue, and what they just showed here does not have that. So, you know, assuming that they're going to stay true to what they have in front of you, some of what I have to say doesn't apply because this, this, so I'll just try to skip on up here. So, one of the so the issue on this particular area is the density. And so, there's been three developments in this area in the last few years. And, uh, and that's, you know, 71 Oaks and Tacoma Estates and Bella Passa, and all of those areas have had 10,000, roughly, an average of 10,000 square foot lots. They're asking for 6,000 square foot lots here, which is, you know, almost double the density. And so, what you got to realize about this area is Greenway ends essentially westbound at 67th Avenue, which funnels everybody down to Thunderbird to continue heading west. So, having that kind of density that's going to pour out onto Thunderbird and potentially back through Weedville and, you know, causing the problems that an access to 73rd Avenue would cause is, is, is a problem. And that, and that's really what it boils down to. You know, the, it's going to cause it's going to cause, you know, traffic. It's just not, it's for the benefit of a few at the cost of many is what it boils down to. So, I would ask you to not allow this kind of density, to stay true to what you have in the past. If not, leave it like it is and, uh, and have moved to another area. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Does the commission have any, any additional questions? David, is there anybody? Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, just, just as a point is that what's, what's before you is the zoning, the proposed zoning, and on the overhead is a zoning exhibit. This is a conceptual site plan. It's not, it is representing, it's illustrating what the subdivision plat is likely to look like. It is not the subdivision plat being approved, recommended for approval today.
Thank you for that clarification. David, is there anybody online that wishes to speak?
Chairman, we're not aware of anyone online.
Okay, with that, I will close the public forum. Is there any discussion by the commission?
Ms. Chairman?
Yes, Commissioner Slasher?
I just have a few brief comments. It's, and I recall this case very clearly. I was obviously fine with it as with the R4. And just like the applicant had stated, I don't think I've ever seen a project reduce their density from down 75%. It's virtually unheard of, and for this, for them to do that, they should be very commended, recommended for doing that. So, um, I'm obviously in favor of this, and unless there's other discussion, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Slasher. Is there any other comments from the commission? All right, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Ms. Chairman?
Commissioner Slasher?
Like to make a motion to approve case Z 2022-068 as presented.
Thank you. We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Slasher. Do we have a second?
I'll make the second.
Is that Commissioner Swart?
Correct.
Commissioner Swart with the second. Rosalie, we'll take a roll call vote.
Commissioner Curly.
Yes.
Commissioner Dan Zeison.
Yes.
Commissioner Landau.
Yes.
Vice Chair Limblum.
Yes.
Commissioner Montoya.
Yes.
Commissioner Swart.
Yes.
Commissioner Slasher.
Yes.
Chairman Hernandez.
Yes.
Chairman, we have a motion recommending approval by a vote of eight to zero.
Thank you, Rosalie. On to Agenda Item Number Four. We're ready for the staff to present the case.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. KC 2023-052 is a request for a zone change with overlay from rural 43 to C2 CUPD for the Desert Foothills Gardens Nursery. The site is approximately 5.27 acres, generally located at the northwest corner of Cave Creek Road and Westland Road in the North Phoenix Cave Creek area. The applicant is requesting this zone change to entitle an existing retail nursery. This use was originally entitled with a special use permit, which was approved in 1994 per KC 9343 and subsequently amended per KC 2002-024. This SUP expired in 2022. The owner submitted a request for a new SUP that year, but in 2023, the owner signed on to this zone change request and withdrew the SUP request. Approval of this zone change would restore entitlement to the property for a retail nursery, although the applicant or owner would then be required to submit a plan of development for review and approval. The applicant is requesting a CUPD overlay to vary some of the development regulations of the C2 zoning district, particularly pavement, parking, and screening requirements. These variations were requested mostly to accommodate existing conditions on site that were allowed with the SUP. The CUPD would also limit the allowed uses on site to retail nurseries, feed stores, sales of butane propane, and uses allowed in the C1 zoning district. The applicant has also requested to allow a static billboard. Originally, the applicant had requested allowing a wireless communication facility and an illuminated billboard with the required separation distance from rural residential zoning for illuminated billboards reduced from 150 feet to 39 feet. These latter two uses, as well as the reduced separation distance, have since been removed from the request. To date, staff has received one letter of support and 42 letters of opposition, with most of the opposition letters specifically referencing a billboard. Some neighbors have noted that the local community observes dark-skies practices and have thus succeeded. and have thus expressed fears that an illuminated billboard would inhibit the intent of making a, of maintaining a dark sky community. Additional concerns referenced opposition to allowing cell towers, feed stores, or butane propane sales. There were further concerns regarding redevelopment of the site to a gas station or multifamily, neither of which were explicitly requested uses, but both of which would be allowed as C one uses, which were requested. Staff also received formal comments from the town of Cave Creek, in which the town recommended a condition prohibiting static and digital billboards, conditions restricting the height, total square footage, and illumination of any future signage to limit visual impact, and a condition requiring any future consideration of a WCFP subject to an SUP. The letter concluded with a request that both the applicant and the county consider the associated regulations of neighboring properties, particularly regarding maximum height restrictions for structures and outdoor lighting. Staff supports the request for a zone change to entitle the existing nursery. To alleviate neighbors' concerns, staff recommends further restricting the uses allowed on site with the CUPD. Due to significant opposition to increased commercial development in the area, staff recommends limiting the allowed uses on site exclusively to retail nurseries and one static non-illuminated billboard. Staff also supports establishing a maximum height restriction of twenty-eight feet for all structures, including billboards, and a height limit of ten feet for exterior lighting. Within the west side setback, the height limit for lighting would be reduced to six feet. Staff supports additional stipulations to address concerns regarding access, screening, and landscaping along Fifty-second Street. Staff recommends restricting the allowed uses to prohibit illuminated and/or digital billboards, as well as billboard embellishments. This will alleviate concerns regarding light pollution and visual impact along Cave Creek Road. The proposed billboard would be along the east lot line, though it must be placed outside the required hundred foot five, a hundred-five foot landscape setback measured from the center line of Cave Creek Road. It must also be located at least a hundred feet away from the nearest residential zoning district boundary or boundary of a residential property in a rural zoning district. Staff recommends the commission adopt a motion recommending that the Board of Supervisors approve Z twenty twenty-three zero five two, subject to conditions A three J as outlined in the staff report. At this time, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions of staff from the commission?
I have a question.
Yes, Commissioner Montoya.
So with the, with the changes that staff made, does this comply with what is considered a dark sky area?
There's, as far as I believe, there are no proposed additions to exterior illumination and with illuminated billboards and digital billboards prohibited, I believe it would be in compliance with dark sky standards.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the commission for staff? All right. Is the applicant here and ready to present the case?
Chairman Hernandez, Gary Hayes, twenty-one ninety East Campbellback. I'm not the applicant, but I'm pitch hitting for Ms. Jessica Sarkisian. She's in Douglas today, so she's asked me to make the presentation. She would have preferred to be here, but she had to be down in Douglas, Arizona this morning. Couple of things just off the bat. I will be brief. I have a presentation, but I know there are several people who would like to speak, so I'd like to reserve some time after they are done. I know that Jessica has worked with the neighbors, has worked with staff, and I know Nicholas is new to the county, but Jessica has said great things, so it's always good when we get new planners. And what, before I forget, of course, congratulations to Chairman Hernandez. Not sure if we can say congratulations to Vice Chairman Lynn Blom, since he's done that job more than I have, I think, or anybody else in this room has. And Commissioner Curly, your dad was a great, great man. He really was. So good to see you up here. So quickly, I'll go on the presentation. So this area is Cave Creek Road. I like this slide because it kind of tells you about what this area is. You're going to hear that it's very rural, and it is in part, but there's also a Walmart Supercenter, that big white building right there on the, on your screen is Walmart Supercenter. The other side of the street is a Sprouts. South of that is an Autozone. South of that is a Dutch Bros. So this is a very commercial area that has residential around it. And the use proposed today that has been in place since nineteen ninety-five is a great buffer. Here you see a little bit more of the site. Now, the north side of the nurseries came before, I think, last month or the month before for a toy barn. It's been in since nineteen eighty-five and commercial since nineteen ninety-five. Basically, everything's the same. It allows the use to be in compliance and with what's happened with staff, and we'll get to in a minute. It allows this to still be a good buffer for the community. So this is existing zoning in that very large or rectangular shape on the east side of Cave Creek Road. That's the Walmart Supercenter. Then that's where the Sprouts is on the west side, Autozone, Dutch Bros. This is what it'll look like after. So this piece actually is not in Cave Creek planning area. This is actually in the city of Phoenix planning area. Phoenix has not weighed in at all. They've been notified. They, they have not made any comments about this case. It's all zoomed in. You can see it, it's basically follows the boundaries of the town limits for Cave Creek as to where their planning area is. You've seen that in the staff report. So these are the deviation requests, and, and I think it's important to note, we'll go to the next slide. I think it's helpful. So Jessica has spent a lot of time talking to the neighbors. I think you'll hear from the neighbors that Jessica has spent a lot of time. I haven't. I'm, again, pinch hitting here. But I think what she has done is listened to the neighbors, worked with staff, and addressed their concerns. Their concerns have been no multifamily. Well, that actually has not been ever proposed, but I think it was in a previous iteration further up the road. They didn't want lit billboards because of dark skies. They didn't want a wireless communication facility. They didn't want propane or butane as a gas station. It's not a gas station, but because it is gas, that's kind of the way it works out in the zoning ordinance. So Jessica worked with staff and got rid of all those. That's why there's no concerns with what staff presented with you today. It's perfectly fine. So it's really all I have. I'll reserve some time after the neighbors speak so I can answer any questions, but we fully support staff's recommendation, appreciate staff working with us. I know that Ms. Sarkisian has worked well with the neighbors and has tried to address as many of their concerns as possible. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions of the applicant from the commission? All right, hearing none. We will proceed with in-person speakers and then allow those who registered to speak online. After public comment, we'll allow time for rebuttal by the applicant. We've got several people who wish to speak today, so please keep your comments to two minutes. And if somebody has already said something prior, please just add additional comments, not necessarily the same comments over and over. So we'll start first with Peter Hathaway.
Hey, everybody.
Good morning. Thank you for coming down. Please state your name for the record.
Peter Hathaway. I'm a local resident, live right down in one of these houses, right in here. Basically, hearing some of the changes that were proposed today, obviously, that helps. No gas station, no billboard, no cell phone tower. That definitely helps us. Just wanted to basically make it clear, even in the plan, to the north, rural, single-family, DR forty-three. To the east, DR forty-three, church, single-family residential, it's all in the plan. South is S one, ranch or farm property. And to the west is R thirty-five, which is a mixed-use, single-family residential. The, we have liked the nursery there. Been there a long time. With these changes, I think it fits where I stand is, you know, making it a possible to stay as a nursery and functionally in the, in the residential area that we live. That's my two cents. Those, those changes were new to us today, so we're learning that as we go.
Cool. Thank you very much. Okay. Next up, Gail Garrett.
Chairman Hernandez, just for clarity, there is a billboard. It just is not illuminated. I just wanted to make sure that that was noted. Is that correct? Did I hear that right?
Yes, there will still be a billboard allowed, one static non-illuminated billboard, but digital or illuminated billboards are prohibited as our billboard embellishments.
Yeah, and I, I believe those are great changes, so I, I like that. But I just wanted to make sure the applicants knew that. I mean, those that are here in the room today knew that.
Thank you, Vice Chair Lynn Blom for the clarification. Gail? Thank you for coming down. Please state your name for the record.
My name's Gail Garrett. I live at fifty thirty East Tanglewood Circle in Cave Creek. What I wanted to say is this area is residential. It's the oldest neighborhood in Cave Creek. It also has been declared a scenic corridor. So in my opinion, this is the entrance to Cave Creek. This is everyone's first impression as they're driving up Cave Creek Road and they're going into town. I do not believe that a billboard has any place in that feel. It impedes the view of the mountains and the vistas. And it just, having it there just feels different. It feels like every town USA. And I think it would be impactful on the overall feel entering our neighborhood and entering into the town of Cave Creek. I have a business in Cave Creek. I've had it for thirteen years. And it's important to me to keep the feel that we have created in this neighborhood, and our town is very unique. It's eclectic. It's raw. It's rural. And I don't think a billboard has any place on that road that close to the entrance to Cave Creek. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, Michael Johnson. Good morning. Thank you for coming down. Please state your name for the record.
Sure. My name is Michael Johnson, and thank you for your consideration. I have two minutes here. Since we don't have time to rebut, I might go as long as three minutes. So again, I live, or thank you for your consideration, and I live on Fifty-second Street, right across the street from this property under consideration. Our residential neighborhood is kind of stuck in the middle, as, as has been sort of indirectly represented here. We have Phoenix residential neighborhoods to the south. Our residential Cave Creek neighborhood is there and a little bit to the west, and then on farther to the north. And then this Maricopa County island between us and Cave Creek Road. And what we're looking for is your support to ensure that changes to this property don't negatively impact our residential neighborhood. Now, nobody wants this billboard, except for the one person that's going to profit from it. And part of the rebuttal, Phoenix did not comment on this specific request, but it did comment on the toy barn request, which is part of the same parcel. Just last month, there was a letter described in some of the, how Phoenix treats this, would have treated this property if it was part of its jurisdiction. And as mentioned, Phoenix designated this stretch of Cave Creek Road as a scenic corridor. Billboards don't have a place in scenic corridors. Cave Creek, as mentioned, the planning director had sent in a letter and specifically commenting about if the commercial properties to the north of this, their signing restrictions are, a sign cannot be taller than twelve feet. A sign cannot have more than forty-eight square feet of display space. And in the, the aerial shot from before, yes, there is a Walmart there. There's a Whole Foods there and so on. You won't see a lot of signage out on the road, let alone billboards. And then the, the comment about willing to allow one billboard on this property, how are you going to fit more than one onto this property? If you're going to allow one, that's all that's going to fit. So the current billboard that's being proposed far exceeds what Cave Creek allows in the properties adjacent to the north. And if this had been Cave Creek property, there'd be no discussion about billboards at all. The initial proposal of a digital or illuminated billboard is totally out of step with what the neighborhood looks like today and other commercial properties in the neighborhood. And as mentioned briefly, for residents like us and visitors to Cave Creek, as you head north on Cave Creek Road, as you go past Rancho Paloma and you're approaching Carefree Highway, it has a different feel. You go from seeing billboards and large signage on the street to seeing Black Mountain, which is a key landmark in Cave Creek. You see the mountains to the north of Cave Creek, and you see all the blue sky that we all appreciate. You don't see billboards. We don't need a billboard there now. Approving this zoning request without the billboard would ensure that the property is consistent with surrounding commercial properties. And approving without the billboard has no negative impact on the core business that's been there for many years. We don't need another twenty-eight-foot-tall advertisement for personal injury lawyers, exterminators, and all the other businesses that have ample opportunity to advertise on other billboards throughout Maricopa County. So thanks for your time.
Thank you very much. Next up, Julie Goldammer. Hopefully, I said that right. Thank you for coming down. Please state your name for the record.
My name is Julie Goldammer, and thank you for this opportunity. I have been sort of the lead person taking care of all this, so I want to make a few points for the record here. First, I live in what's called the red zone. We're affectionately calling it the oven mitt map because it looks like an oven mitt when you look at it. It's that three-hundred-foot section immediately surrounding the property directly to the west. I live right across the street from here. That is my partner in crime right there. My neighbors, Rich Conley and Nan Woodward, also are in that zone, the red zone, and we're here to speak. We have forty homes in the Suaro West immediate neighborhood that are within Cave Creek. Suaro West is much larger, and you've heard it's a historic neighborhood. They all have to drive down Westland past this property to gain access to the neighborhood. Of the forty-some neighbor, or neighborhood opposition letters, it was thirty-five last night when I was counting through it. And I was actually totaling up everything that came from our neighborhood. Of the forty, thirteen are from this Suaro West neighborhood. That's a pretty large number of oppositions, mostly talking about the billboard. I know that one more letter came in last night, so he had said there was forty-two already. I know it was difficult for Mr. Schlimm to process some of these letters because their parcel numbers weren't on there. People don't know how to do that, and because some of them didn't give an address or a complete address. But I will want to tell you, these thirteen people that responded all live within one half mile of the subject property. In the red zone, we have at least five people here speaking today, and we are not used to a three-hundred-foot notice. We are used to a quarter mile in Cave Creek. That is our, that is what they have to notify. So this was really hard for the neighbors to quickly respond, but I think we got a lot of opposition. You've all heard that the owner of the cactus nursery, who's not here, Mr. Pingator, is asking to rezone to commercial. He's selling the north side of the parcel to toy barn developers, doing their own rezone that you already heard last month at the December seventh commissioning. For the, for the neighborhood, it's unfortunate that this was put into two different timelines and agendas and two different votes. We neighbors see this as one big parcel, and it still is one big parcel. I'm not against the cacti, the cactus nursery getting rezoned, as long as the use is limited to a cactus plant nursery. And it, and it, it's actually a good thing that he would get commercially zoned. He will have to comply with stricter zoning ordinances where he can't use Fifty-second Street as his back alley, his storage lane, his parking lot, and his loading zone. As this commission heard, we worked really closely, and we appreciate the work from the toy barn attorneys. They were very nice, decent people. That is not what happened here. I spoke only two times to Jessica. She was lovely. But she had very difficult times getting ahold of the owner to actually respond to him. So, Mr. Hayes, I'm sorry, but I'm going to say that that's not true, that he worked with the neighbors. None of that's true. Mr. Pingatory knew exactly what we were concerned about, and I want the commission to understand one thing. I noticed that the billboard was put down as twenty-eight feet, which seems like this weirdly interesting magical number. But this is the context. We have Black Mountain directly in front of us. When these buildings go up from Toy Barn, which will be exactly in front of us, I asked them to stick with, we started with twenty feet, which is a single-story home, because we didn't want our views of Black Mountain blocked by a forty-foot building. They came back, Toy Barn did, with thirty feet. And we worked together because they were wonderful, and I, I commented on December seventh. And we got to twenty-eight feet, but they went to their engineers, and twenty-eight feet wasn't what we wanted. But we acquiesced because they also agreed, and in conjunction with that, that they were going to screen it with box trees every fifteen feet. They were going to paint it desert tone colors, and they were basically going to and they were basically going to buffer it with prettier architectural block on the side of the building. And so that's why we agreed to it. A twenty-eight-foot billboard stuck in the middle of Georgia's property is going to look like the biggest eyesore that ever lived. So that twenty-eight feet did not happen in a vacuum. It's not because we wanted it. It's because it came with other stipulations. And that's what I'm asking the commission to please do. Mr. Pingator is fully aware of these concessions and our concerns. He attended the meeting in my garage when the Toy Barn presented all of them. Sadly, he was pretty aggressive about it. We agree and thank Mr. Schlimm for the considerations made in his recommendations report with all of the other considerations, but we vehemently disagree with allowing one billboard. We don't want any billboards. Mr. Pingator, the owner, will greatly benefit from the neighborhood willingness to work with the Toy Barn developers he is selling to. Instead of working with us or thanking us, he left the meeting at my home, issuing a veiled threat in front of everybody, saying, if we neighbors don't approve this, he's just going to sell to an apartment developer or something worse. We don't appreciate operating under fear and his lack of availability to talk to, because I asked many times, and Jessica will tell you, and it's sad that she's not here. His will in willingness to sit down or talk with us through this is unfortunate. So please, no, no billboards. Please vote for this without the billboard. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, Richard Conley.
Morning. My name is Richard Conley. Thank you for your service to the community. I live directly across the street from the nursery, and this is the first time I ever heard of Jessica reaching out to the neighbors. Because when I look out the front door, the nursery is right across the street. So somebody's been misinformed. I live within the town limits of Cave Creek and on the residential street facing the Desert Hills Landscape Nursery. I and my wife purchased the property in two thousand and eleven. It was bank-owned. The home was vacant and rundown. The landscaping was dry, neglected, dead. Ground squirrels had gotten under and into the house. Something had chewed on the wooden toilet seat. The leaky swamp cooler on the roof had rusted the support legs and looked like it could fall through the roof. We got rid of that house. We replaced the home with a newer, better-built, more modern house. At the time, we lived in Washington State. Our intent was to rent out the home and visit during winter months, snowbirds. Given our workaholic natures, we started making improvements to the home and landscape. Instead of renting it, we found ourselves living in it each winter. Fast forward ten years, we sold the house in Washington and moved to Cave Creek. My wife had been diagnosed with stage-four lung cancer, was being treated at Mayo Clinic. She passed away in two thousand and twenty-two. It was never our intention to live full-time in this property, but I find myself here at this moment in time. Over the time, I witnessed the behavior of the nursery owner. Behavior appears to be on an industrial scale inappropriate to the residential neighborhood. Heavy diesel equipment operates both on the nursery property and on the adjoining residential street. Forklifts, cranes, and two types of large tractor backhoes. There's delivery trucks and companies with tractor-trailer rigs and box fans are part of this nursery operation on the residential street. On one occasion, two tractor-trailer rigs parked in front of my house after dark to spend the night next to the next to the nursery. Nursery owner had given them permission to park there. Another time, a neighbor kept knocking on my door at nine o'clock at night. He was trying to keep he was trying to sleep with the smell of a strong odor of something burning. It turns out there was a burn barrel on the nursery property, smoldering and producing a burning plastic odor. Next day, the neighbor spoke to the nursery owner about the problem, but the burning continued. I called Maricopa Environmental Services about the issue. They sent someone out and told them to stop. And they called me back to tell me that they that if he did it again, there was a ten-thousand-dollar fine. In general, it's quite common for people to put unwanted refuse towards the backside of their property. If you drive through the Appalachian Mountains, you can see it all the time, and it can be seen on an industrial scale along the backside of the nursery. In August of two thousand and twenty-three, I observed the owner with a large boring machine drilling a hole in the backside of his property. It was not a well-drilling machine. Well-drilling machines use smaller diameter pipes. This was a twenty-four-inch diameter for making pilings. I called county services about it. They sent someone out. But the drilling operation was finished and gone. He was just in and out. The hole was covered up. I hope that the hole was not used for diesel motor motor oil disposal, as this would contaminate any local aquifer. Recently, the nursery owner told me that he had been doing this for forty years, and I could take all the pictures I wanted. This happened as I was walking past him unloading a truck on his forklift on Fifty Second Street. Hillbilly redneck behavior is the thought that comes to mind when I think about the activity of the nursery property, along with an if you don't get caught, then it's okay philosophy. As a homeowner, I should be concerned, but I'm not. After the loss of my wife, there's not much, if anything, to concern me. But right is right and wrong is wrong. I support my neighbors in wanting a clean and safe environment. The currently permitted activity of the nursery location is degrading the neighborhood, same as it would be to your neighborhood. My daily walks take me through Saguaro West neighborhood, during which I observed a steady improvement over the last ten years. New homes, instructions have been built, older homes remodeled, landscapes improved. The nursery is an anachronism from a bygone era. It should be treated as such and not promoted in any way, shape, or form. For those reasons, I am against any special zoning treatment or promotion of the aforementioned property. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Conley.
I brought some presentation materials. If
they've been playing on the
They have. Okay, so then you can see what actually what's going on now without it being even a C-two property. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Coming up next, Nan or Non Woodward. And please, if you could keep your comments to two minutes or less, and if it's any new material that you would like to talk about.
Yes, thank you. My name is Nan Woodward. I live at five-one-three-three East Tanglewood Circle in Cave Creek. I am in the red zone that has been spoken about. I I do have a comment I would like to make. Just this morning, a neighbor brought me a letter which has been submitted to you. She was in opposition of this. She has made calls to Jessica. She has written to her. Jessica has never responded to her. I have never heard from Jessica, and I don't know of any neighbors that have. So I I think there's there's a little difference of what we as residents are going to say to you as opposed to the lawyer. I will try to make this brief because a lot of things have been stated. Our neighborhood is a lovely area and, as been stated, is one of the oldest ones in Cave Creek. We have been fallen, we have fallen into a zoning order in this Twilight Zone. We used to belong to Phoenix. We were annexed into Cave Creek in the eighties. We have a small sliver of county island property right in the middle of Cave Creek. Three jurisdictions impact our neighborhood. The roads on either side of the cactus nursery, that's Cave Creek Road and Fifty Second Street, are under Cave Creek jurisdiction. According to the staff report, the cactus nursery gets its water from the town of Cave Creek. Please consider that the city of Phoenix's input and the town of Cave Creek's input together do impact this. For the residents of our neighborhood, all of this is very confusing, is what belongs to what. I would like to also reiterate that the city of Phoenix did respond to the Toy Barn application. And it has been stated before that this is all one parcel. So the city of Phoenix did respond, and they were not in favor of the of the zone. Please respect that, and please vote to disallow the use of billboards. There are no billboards in Cave Creek. This is our home where we live. It's a residential property. There is no need for a billboard. And unlike what was presented about Sprouts and Walmart, yes, those things do exist. They're set very back from the road. There is no signage. There is nothing like that. There is not at Dutch Brothers either. So there is, we see that there's just no need for a billboard. It doesn't affect how his nursery runs. So I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much. Next, Carrie Dyrek.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Carrie Dyrek. I am the town of Cave Creek Town Manager. Also in attendance is our Vice Mayor Catherine Bray. And we very much appreciate the opportunity to speak before you today. You did receive a letter from our Director of Development Services, Luke Housman. And he is in attendance online. We'd like to thank the staff for the additional recommendations. We appreciate that. But the town would like the county to still consider our recommendation that would prohibit the installation of any billboard. Billboards are not allowed in the town of Cave Creek. The town would like to recommend, as we stated in our letter, we would like you to consider conditions that restrict height, total square footage, and illumination of any future signage to limit adverse visual impact on the area. The neighboring commercial zone within the town of Cave Creek has a maximum sign height of twelve feet, a maximum sign area of forty-eight square feet, and prohibits internally illuminated signs. And just for the record, reference the comments by the applicant on Walmart and Sprouts. The setbacks off of the roadway are are pretty significant, and both of those businesses meet the town of Cave Creek height restrictions, our lighting ordinances, and are in compliance. So we know that that commercial properties can meet these requirements. Lastly, we would like the county to consider the associated regulations of the neighboring community in the spirit of cooperation between the county and Cave Creek for our residents and our commercial properties. The town limits the maximum height of structures in all zones to two stories and twenty-five feet, measured from natural grade and to the top of the roof line or peak of roof. Cave Creek also restricts building mounted outdoor lighting installed to a maximum of ten feet in height and further requires that all outdoor lighting be shielded and down cast down wear so that the light source, the bulb, is not clearly visible from any adjacent property or street. And we value our dark skies. Again, we appreciate the opportunity to speak, and we'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. And again, we appreciate staff's recommendations.
Ms. Chairman.
Yes, Commissioner Schlosser.
I do have a question. It's not my district, and I distinctly remember the Toy Barn case, which was only a month ago. My my memory doesn't span much further back than that, but again, not my district. A lady was here. There were several familiar faces from last month, but but she had provided a video. And the first part of the video showed all the larger lot residential acreages there. But the video also showed, and I think it swayed, at least it swayed my opinion, I voted in favor of the Toy Barn.
Okay.
Because it the video also showed Walmart, the Dutch Brothers, and all that stuff. And I guess my question for you, not being from this district, the Walmart and the other retail in the area. What is the signage? Can you sort of briefly describe the signage that's that's in the in that general area?
This, and I can't get into the the specifics, but I do know that they do meet our height requirements and our lighting requirements and the square footage of the overall signage per the town code. All of them are in compliance.
Oh, for instance, the Walmart signs no higher than twelve feet. Is that in the city of?
That that is in the town of Cave Creek, the Walmart. Yeah, it's on the southeast corner of Carefree Highway and Cave Creek Road. The Dutch Brothers is on the west side of North Cave Creek Road. And just a little north and to the west is the Sprouts complex. And all of those have the meet the the height requirements and the size requirements for the signs and our lighting requirements.
I guess the reason for my question. Thank you for answering that. And and bringing everybody up to speed and giving them visually.
Thank you. We appreciate your consideration.
Thank you.
Let's get, we'll see if there's anybody online, and then you can rebut, Mr. Hayes. David, is there anybody online who wishes to speak?
The one online has expressed an interest in speaking on this case.
Okay, Mr. Hayes, we'll give you a few minutes to rebut to the comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A couple of things, and I have to be honest, Ms. Dyrek and I have been friends, and I consider her a friend for many years. She just told me she's retiring next month, so I appreciate all her service to the town of Cave Creek and Yuma. She came from Yuma before that, so Carrie is a dear friend. And and I actually was kind of intimately involved with the Sprouts and some of the stuff up there, as Ms. Dyrek will tell you. So I I know this area. I I think I want to touch on a couple of things. I think it's important to remember staff came up with the twenty-eight-foot number. That twenty-eight foot is less than what is allowed for a residential house in R forty-three. So we are talking about shorter than what is allowed by right for a house in Maricopa County R forty-three. So it is two feet lower than that. It is definitely, I don't even know how many, twenty feet lower, I think, than what is allowed as a use by right for a billboard in this zoning district. What was, and I wish Ms. Sarkisian was here today to defend her honor. I will try. I I know Mr. Conley at least knows Jessica's email because he did send her an email last night, which I have seen. So I think Jessica has done, and I've known Jessica a long time. She is really good about communicating with neighbors, so I I would like to believe Jessica has communicated. I know a neighborhood meeting was held on this project and one person attended. But what what you have in front of you today is, and I think some people alluded to it. I don't think some of the neighbors like the way the nursery is run. The good news about doing this with a C-two zoning that has a board action, it actually helps code enforcement enforce what you guys will support today. It actually will help the neighbors if the individual is doing stuff that's not allowed. Because now code enforcement has a board action. They can then take that board action and enforce it. So that actually, this whole process will actually help the neighbors if there are concerns about how this individual runs his nursery. I see that look there. So I I think when you when you look at it in its totality, you have basically four requests that the neighbors made. We like our dark skies. We don't want illuminated billboard. We we don't want a wireless communication facility. We don't want propane butane gas station. We don't want multifamily. What staff has crafted today addresses all of those issues and still allows this project to move forward. So I would like to thank that Jessica heard from the neighbors, worked with staff. Staff came up with something everybody could agree to, except for the neighbors now don't want a billboard at all. And and what you have in front of you today is a project that is good for the community. You are in a area that is Super Walmarts, Dutch Bros. And it's also important to note, like, I understand that the Cave Creek has different height requirements, but this is actually Phoenix general plan area, which has significantly different requirements than the than the town of Cave Creek. And it's important to note, because I believe one of the speakers said that it's one case. And so Phoenix said they were opposed to Toy Barn, so they must be opposed to ours. That's actually not how the system works. So staff will route to Phoenix. Here's this case. Here's that case. If Phoenix weighs in on one, that doesn't mean their opposition applies to the other. I think I covered everything. Oh, one more quick point. I think someone said scenic corridor. If you notice in Mr. Schlimm's memo, he stated that that is not a scenic corridor according to Maricopa County. That's it. I'm available if you have any questions. That's it. I'm available if you have any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes. Is there any questions from the commission?
Yes, this is Commissioner Landau. One question on the billboard is what, what's the intended, I guess, material that's going to be on the billboard? Do we know? And this is partially just out of curiosity.
It will just be a, it'll have to go through a P O D, I'm sorry, through the chair, Commissioner Landau. It will be part of the P O D staff will look at it. It will be just a standard billboard allowed by use.
Okay.
Yes, Mr. Gerard. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Commissioner Landau, we, the government has no control over the content of a billboard message.
I think she's talking about.
I guess my, I guess my question was more, is it related to the nursery or is it not? And I don't think it, it was more out of curiosity.
Yeah. And if I could through the chair, Commissioner Landau, it's off-site signage, not onsite.
Okay. Makes sense. Thank you.
Chairman Hernandez, this is Commissioner Limblom.
Yes, Commissioner Limblom.
My question's for Mr. Hayes, and you may not remember this, and you might not have even been the person that brought this case. I'm just trying to understand heights. I think it was you that brought a case a while, while back, but it's a billboard on Valvista and Warner and Gilbert. Do you recall the height of that? And the only reason I'm asking is I drove by it just, just this morning and just trying to understand heights. And do you remember what that was?
Through the chair, Vice Chairman Limblom, I don't remember one on Valvista and Warner. I remember one on Valvista and Jermaine. Is that the one you're talking about?
No, but that one will work too, because I remember that one. Do you remember that, the height of that?
Darren knows it.
That was much higher, right?
That it is taller. That's the one, I believe it's the one that is south of Rittenhouse and the railroad track and near the golf course.
Through the, through the chair, I believe that's 40 feet, if my memory serves me. I'm getting old, but I believe it's 40 feet. So about 12 feet higher than what is proposed today.
Yeah, that, that sounds right to me as well. Yeah, the, the height and being consistent with the buildings nearby tends to alleviate some of my concerns. I certainly can appreciate those that despise billboards. I think I fall into that category at times. I also tend to allow them in my mind because of free speech issues for me. And being able to have venues where people can advertise and share expression and rather than just like going to Facebook or Instagram, which I do not go to because I just do not like them. But, but anyway, I have, I have certainly expressed concerns, Mr. Hayes, in the past. I've voted yes, no, and otherwise on these. So, but I feel more and more comfortable with this. Just because of the non-illumination is a big deal to me, and also height is a big deal to me. It's lower than a, than what I, some of those I've passed in the past. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Vice Chair Limblom. Is there anybody else on the commission who has questions for Mr. Hayes? Okay, hearing none, we will close the public forum and I'll open it up for discussion amongst the commission.
This is, oh, go ahead, Commissioner Montoya.
Thank you. Thank you. You know, this is a really interesting case because of the fact that, you know, this parcel is located, you know, close to Cave Creek, you know, within the boundaries or abutting the boundaries of Cave Creek, the city of Phoenix. But this is county property and there's mention of a scenic corridor. I'm not familiar with the area, but based on the aerials that we have here, it looks very rural to me. And I know that Cave Creek, you know, I've been, I've been in the valley almost all my entire lifetime. So I've seen the valley grow and I know that Cave Creek was a small community and it's growing. But I share the concerns that the neighbors have with regard to the billboard. I'm not very comfortable with having a billboard here on this property. And it's certainly going to be part of my consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Montoya. Commissioner Landau, did you have some comments?
Yes, and this is, I start out with, this is my district, so just take that. What it is, I think when we went through the Toy Barn case last month, Commissioner Schlosser said some important points that I've taken to heart of, you know, there is already commercial development being, that's already there with the Walmart and the Sprouts. And I think the Toy Barn and now in this instance, the nursery have done a good job of working with staff to account for neighbor concerns and prevent this from becoming too commercial and serve as a nice buffer. And I think the staff's conditions really account for a vast majority of neighbor concerns and that the billboard is, you know, going to be lower in height than what it was, what it could be. And the non-illumination is also a very important factor for me, given to preserve the dark skies. So I think from my perspective, that's, that's kind of where my head is at, that this is still, it provides a nice buffer and that the billboard is a, it's nice, I guess, the last concession that the landowner receives after everything else that the neighbors would have liked has, have been addressed.
Thank you, Commissioner Landau. Is there any other comments from the commission? Commissioner Schlosser?
Chairman. I guess to, first of all, thank you all for showing up and expressing your, your opinions and insight on everything. The premise of my question to the nice lady regarding the other, the other commercial stuff in the area. I think Commissioner Landau was, was hitting on this as well or keen on it. And that is that this area is growing, even though it's Cave Creek's adjacent, as Commissioner Montoya said. But my, the premise of my question and the, and the reason I brought up that video with all the growth that's going on in the area. And the reason I voted for the Toy Barn and, and with what they're trying to accomplish here with the, with this billboard and their concessions. I guess that's it. I just want to make sure everybody was clear that, that it wasn't necessarily the sign height of the Walmart, but that there was other commercial uses that are coming and still coming in the area. And it's a, it's an area of growth and progress and, and that's what we're facing today. So I just want to make sure that everybody knew where I was coming from with that question.
Thank you, Commissioner Schlosser. And I would like to echo some of your comments. I appreciate members of the community coming down here and voicing their opinions and weighing in on it. We appreciate that. So if there's no more discussion, I'll open it up for.
Chairman Hernandez, I'll just, I'll be brief. I, I heard the residents today and I want to be clear about that. And there is a growing amount of NIMBYism within these kind of rooms where it's not in my backyard. And I'm, and I am not saying that just happened. I'm saying that's what's happened across commissions and boards across the valley as we have built out. There's all these like infills and places that haven't annexed and it's just different now. It's, it's, it is how we, how we approach these infills and little county islands. I, I drove by a billboard that I approved in the middle of my town, which is not normal of Gilbert this morning for a reason, because I, I, I don't want to do to those that are affected by this property what I wouldn't be willing to do in my own yard. And that's why I bring up the NIMBYism, not in my backyard. The, the billboard that I mentioned on Valvista and Warner is near Home Depot, a Target, a Fry's, all within proximity, very similar. And then residential homes all around it as well, very similar. And that's why I drove by it this morning. This is lower. It's not illuminated. And I just feel comfortable. I'm not destroying the quality of life and that the land use is proper. And that's, I just wanted to express that today because I want people to understand why I vote and how I vote because I do care about land use and I do care about how we impact the residents and neighbors. That I am far away from there, but that doesn't change how I feel. I vote the same as if it was in my own backyard and I just wanted to express that today. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Limblom. Anybody else from the commission have any comments? Yes, Commissioner Montoya. We can't, we can't hear you right now.
Okay. I think we heard from a representative from Cave Creek. And I'm, because of where this particular parcel is located, did staff take into consideration the sign heights nearby when considering this particular site?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, yes, we did review the corridor. There is a billboard north of the northwest corner of Lone Mountain and Cave Creek Road that would be 30 feet high.
Thank you.
Thank you, Darren. Is there any other questions or comments from the commission? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion.
This is Commissioner Landau. I make a motion to approve case Z2023052 as presented by staff.
Thank you, Commissioner Landau. Do we have a second?
This is Commissioner Curly. I second.
We got a second from Commissioner Curly. Rosalie?
Commissioner Curly.
Yes.
Commissioner Dan Zeison?
Yes.
Commissioner Landau?
Yes.
Vice Chair Lindblom?
Yes.
Commissioner Montoya?
I want to say a few words first. I come from an area that is rural and is changing rapidly. And, you know, as commissioners, we depend and defer a lot to the recommendations of staff because they're the experts. However, we do listen to any neighborhood and resident concerns. This is an area that is growing and with growth, there are some things that come that are uncomfortable. While I empathize and support the residents who have, you know, made time and effort to come and provide testimony today and provide comments. I think, you know, we, we live in a valley that has been growing for 50 years and, and there's no stop in growth. And for us, you know, we are residents ourselves and we're volunteers on this board. And sometimes we have to make these difficult decisions. I know this is a difficult one for me because I really support residents who, who will make that kind of time to come and participate civically and, and provide a voice to their, to their neighborhoods. But it's growth and we're moving forward. And so I am a yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Swart?
Yes.
Commissioner Schlosser?
Yes.
Chairman Hernandez?
Yes.
Chairman, we have a motion of approval of a vote of eight to zero.
Thank you, Rosalie. Motion carries. Moving on, regular agenda item number five. Staff present the case, please.
Thank you, Chairman. Members of the board of the commission. KC2023113 is a zone change request from Rule 43 to C2CUPD overlay. The purpose of the overlay would be to allow for an increased height, lower standard parking requirements and restrict other uses allowed in C2 to accommodate a proposed two-story 114,000 square foot self-storage facility. The site is just over two and a half acres, located approximately 1,266 feet west of the southwest corner of McQueen Road and Chandler Heights Road in the Chandler area. The site is surrounded by City of Chandler jurisdiction in Supervisor District 1. The City of Chandler reviewed the proposal on May 3, 2023. The municipal comments identified the proposed use as a not, as not allowed by right and does not meet Chandler's general plan designations of neighborhoods, which does not contemplate regional commercial and industrial uses. Further, the existing area plan designates the site as a golf course. The requested zoning overlay development standards include a proposed height of 35 feet, one parking space per 980 square foot of sales office floor area, and one parking space per 11,324 square foot of self-storage warehousing area, limiting the use to a self-storage facility and related ancillary uses and legislative approval of the site plan and grading and drainage plans submitted as part of the rezon request. Apart from the pre-technical memo provided by the City of Chandler stating the city's non-support on the request, staff received no neighborhood opposition to the request as a result of the public participation outreach completed by the applicant. Due to the site being surrounded by developed land, staff finds this proposal reasonable use serving adjacent residential neighborhoods as well as a valid infill development mitigating the potential for accumulation of trash and debris should the site remain vacant. Staff has provided a handout memo with clarifications on condition G D since the publishing of the staff report, adjusting the amount of time for the developer to receive a will serve letter from the municipality for water service and removing references to municipal sewer services as a, as a permanent onsite septic solution is proposed with this request. Staff recommends the commission adopt a motion recommending that the Board of Supervisors approve Z2023113, subject to conditions A through J. Happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Are there any questions from the commission for staff? Okay, hearing none. Is the applicant here and ready to make a presentation? Thank you for coming down. Please provide your name for the record.
Chairman, members of the commission, my name is Greg Davis with I Plan Consulting. Here on behalf of the property owners, with me is Jason Barney, John Hartman and Alan Sun of all the developers of the project. So happy new year to y'all. It's been a few years since I've been here, so I appreciate the opportunity to come down here and talk about this project. There we go. All right. So here's a kind of a macro view of the property. Unlike the last project, this is in a very developed area, has development on all four sides. So it's in South Chandler area, for those that are familiar with it. We have the golf course. I think it's Bear Creek to our west and then residential on the other sides. Kind of zooming into the property, you can see that for, you know, a multitude of reasons, this site has just kind of been overlooked over all these years. Has to do a lot with the shape and size, et cetera. But it was also separated by a canal and thus not included in the golf course original design. But that is the, kind of the history of why it does have that overlay. At one point, it was considered to be in that area, thus could be developed with the golf course. It obviously never happened. Here's some photos of the property. There are three existing homes on the site right now in various states of repair or disrepair. There's also some illegal dumping that happens on there. There's vehicles that are stored on there, et cetera. So it's, it's an overlooked parcel that's really right on the, you know, a main thoroughfare and really needs to be redeveloped. So here's a view from the south. You can see the canal really limiting the width of the property at the location. And this is a view from the northeast. So the one stick-built property on there right now. Now, the site is about three and a half, three and a third acre, zoned to Rule 43. And as I said, it's currently used for residential and does have some private outdoor storage use of the property. Most of the property is in a state of disrepair. And again, there's all. And again, there's all, all sorts of illegal dumping going on it. So, you know, we really see an opportunity to, you know, benefit not only our project, but the neighbors. This is a pretty high-end portion of the City of Chandler, as well as just the community itself by, you know, improving this, this property. Now, some of the challenges to the site and why it hasn't been developed, I kind of noted on the slide up there. It is a small size for any reasonable-sized project. It does have a neighborhood overlay, or I'm sorry, the general plan designation of neighborhood. So it could potentially be developed as apartments or something, but at three acres, it's, it's a challenge to do so. The shape of the property is a significant issue. The property only has one point of access, which is located at the very northwest portion of the site. There's actually a signal at the northeast. It's a T-intersection, so you're very limited on what you can put in there as far as driveways, number of driveways, as well as orientation or access, right in, right out, et cetera. The property itself on a more macro level is kind of mid-block. It's a quarter-mile west of McQueen Road, so it doesn't have a lot of potential or commercial and or office use. It's also located in the floodplain. So all these things have, you know, resulted in the property not being developed. And that, in fact, that it's in a low-intensity area. So when we looked at this property, really, there was only one use that made a lot of sense to us, which is the storage use. The storage use is low intensity, generates low amounts of traffic, low noise, low nights, lights, et cetera. And we think it works well for the site because of that. We're not impacting the streets, we're not impacting the neighbors, but we can utilize the site and maximize it to its highest and best use. So we're proposing the C2 underlying zoning district with a CUPD overlay. And the reason for the CUPD is that we want to make sure that the neighbors, the city, the county, understand that our goal is simply to develop, sorry, the self-storage use only. So we're restricting all other CT uses as well as C1 uses for this property, including billboards. And we're also locking in the development standards. Staff covered those, we do show them in, on the site plan. We do have a deviation that we're asking on the east side. That is a requirement for height limitation. C2 typically requires 40 feet. But because we have an adjacent county or a city parcel that's zoned R43, we're limited to 21 feet, but that parcel is not used for residential use. It's just a five-to-10-foot remnant property that's left over. In addition to that, we also have a City of Chandler parcel further to the east that has about a 90-foot width. So quite a bit of separation, which is why we're asking for that deviation. From a buffering standpoint, we have quite a bit of distance from our property, our nearest residential. To the north, it's about 220 feet. To the south is over 900 feet. To the east is about 130 feet, so that's our closest neighborhood. And then we have over 2,000 feet to the west across the golf course. We did architectural designs for this project. We wanted to share both with the neighbors that were interested, as well as yourselves, on what we're intending to build here. And we're trying to develop something that's completely, you know, in performance with what the City of Chandler would want to see in this location. So it's all indoor storage. You can see the building there, it looks like an office building. We have glass fenestration on the corners, using a variety of materials, articulation of the roof, parapet height, et cetera. This is a view from the northwest where the project entrance is. And then this is a view from the golf course, and we are screening the loading area there behind the building, so it's not visible from the street. Now, we've had quite a bit of efforts of neighborhood outreach. We followed the county guidelines as far as mailing out a notice of application. We also held a neighborhood meeting on site. The only person we got to attend was the, one of the renters of the property itself. No neighbors attended. And we obviously, the staff mailed out the public notification, and I don't believe they've received any comments or, or opposition from anyone, including the City of Chandler at this point. So we don't know of any known neighborhood opposition, and we respectfully request your, your support in this proposal. Myself or Jason would be glad to answer your questions that you have.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Is there any questions from the commission for Mr. Davis? All right, hearing none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll proceed with in-person speakers and allow those registered online to speak. After public comment, we'll allow time for rebuttal by the applicant. I don't have any cards for anybody in person. Yes, Mr. Gerard?
Just for clarification, when, when it comes time to make your motion, be aware that condition E.1 is referencing a maximum height of 35 feet. And E.2 says one per 980 square foot of sales office. That is referencing one parking space per, and if, just, that will be corrected as we move that forward to the.
Okay.
So if you do it per staff recommendation, we will include that verbiage.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. David, do we have anybody online who wishes to speak or has a hand raised?
There's no one online wishing to speak.
Thank you, David. Since there's no one from the public that wants to speak, we'll close the public forum. Is there any discussion from the commission?
This, this is Commissioner Limblom. I'll be brief. It's my district, I know the location, I fully support it.
Yes, Vice Chair Limblom?
Were you able to hear me before?
Okay, you just said you're in support, I just want to clarify that.
Yeah, I just, I just said, I know the location, and to me, it feels like a great use, and I'm fully in support of it.
Thank you, Vice Chair Limblom. Do we have any other questions or comments from the commission? Hearing none, we will entertain a motion.
I typically would make that motion, but if you'll tell me the case number, I would be happy to make the, the motion. I just do not remember the case number.
I can make the motion.
All right, thank you.
Yes, Commissioner Slasher?
Make a motion to approve case number Z2023113 as presented and with, keep in mind, E.1 and E.2 will be added to the stipulation.
Thank you, we have a motion by Commissioner Slasher. Do we get a second?
I will second, Commissioner Limblom.
We have, we have a second by Vice Chair Limblom. Rosalie, can we get a roll call vote?
Commissioner Curly? Commissioner Dan Zeison?
Yes.
Commissioner Landal?
Yes.
Commissioner Limblom?
Yes.
Commissioner Montoya?
Yes.
Commissioner Swart?
Yes.
Commissioner Slasher?
Yes.
Chairman Hernandez?
Yes.
Chairman, we have a motion recommending approval by a vote of eight to zero.
Thank you, Rosalie. Motion carries. Mr. Gerard, do we have any other matters? All right, thank you, guys, for sticking with me in my first meeting, and the meeting is adjourned at 11:08.
Great job.